Good evening and welcome to another edition of the InFocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. I'm Eric Marsh, Executive Director of Whitewater Community Television. Glad you're able to join us for this one-hour special InFocus Candidate Forum. There were so many candidates running, we couldn't get them all in on Thursday night, so we're doing a Wednesday night addition, believe this or not. But we're glad that you have decided to be a part of this conversation. You can join in. We'll be putting up a number, also our Twitter information, so you can send us questions for candidates running for the Northeastern Wayne School District. But first, we need to remind you of a few items. First of all, registering to vote. We've been saying this, it seems like a long time, probably for the last couple of months, and you've been ignoring us for the last couple of months because, oh, it doesn't happen until October. Well, it's October, and you can get registered now. If you haven't done it already, register to vote Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30 at the voter registration office, 301 East Main Street. Or you can do it online, indiana-voters.com. Go, you can check your registration. If you've moved, you definitely do need to make some changes. So, indiana-voters.com, you can do it from the comfort of your home, or you can go to the voting office, the clerk's office, 301 East Main Street, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. A reminder that our InFocus Candidate Forums will pick up again on Thursday evening, tomorrow night, as a matter of fact. Candidates running for a sixth congressional district will be in studio with us, and we'll take that show for probably 90 minutes. And then, coming up, October 11th, Indiana State Representative District 56, and Indiana Wayne County Council District 3 on October 18th, and then on October 25th, Indiana State's Senate District 27. Also want to remind you, there is a chance for you to ask questions in person of some of the candidates. We'll be recording these and airing them later. Hometown Media Group is having two candidate forums where they're inviting candidates. The first one is going to be on October 9th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Gole Lake Community Center on the corner of State Road 1 and US 40 in Cambridge City. And then, we're having another one on October 16th at Hartley Hills Country Club. That will be from 6:00 to 9:30. The first one on the 9th is for the state races, Wayne County Council District 3, town councils, things of that nature. And then, the one coming up on the 16th at Hartley Hills, they're inviting the school board candidates to be a part of that. So again, you can go, you can sit, you can hear the candidates answer questions, and you will also have a chance to ask them some questions during both of those. Also, I want to remind you that in-person absentee voting, early voting, actually begins on October 10th. So you can register to vote up until the 9th, and then the 10th absentee voting begins, that's Monday through Friday, again, 8:30 to 5:00 p.m. Monday, 8:30 to 5:00 p.m. Tuesday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. Again, the voter registration office, 301 East Main Street. There'll also be a couple of Saturdays, you see that on the screen, October 27th and November 3rd, from 9 till 4. And the last day is November 5th, from 8:30 until 12. And just in case you're curious about campaign signs, the Indiana Department of Transportation has put out a message that we should pass along, since we have people who may be putting out some signs here. Campaign signs are prohibited from the right-of-way, according to Indiana Code 9-21-4-6. N.DOT personnel will remove campaign signs, and other illegal signs from right-of-ways. You can find those at the N.DOT facility office. Just a couple of things to remember. How about that? All right, they feel a little better now, the candidates, because I've killed about four and a half minutes of their time, so now they're much more relaxed. We have candidates here this evening, running for an at-large seat in the Northeastern Wayne School District. Angela Klein, Eric Fields, Kristen Lumpkin. Thank you all very much for being here. We're joined again this week by Melissa Vance, President and CEO of the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce. Thanks for coming back.
Thanks for having me. It's always a pleasure.
We're going to start this like we have all of our InFocus Candidate Forums, by asking the candidates to take about a minute, minute and a half, and introduce themselves to you. We're going to start with Angela.
Okay. My name's Angela Klein. I am a social worker. I work for Reed Health. I do work for them in the community. I'm married to a 1991 Northeastern graduate. I have two children that go to Northeastern School. I have a 5th grade son at the elementary, and an 8th grade daughter at the middle school. And I have lived in Fountain City about 20 years now.
Okay. Eric?
My name's Eric Fields. I moved here about 16 years ago to the Northeastern Wayne School District. I have three children currently enrolled in school. I have a daughter who's in high school, she's a freshman. I have a son who's in 6th grade at the middle school, and I have another son who is in 1st grade at the elementary school. So I've got one child in each of the three school buildings at Northeastern. I'm currently a detective with the Indiana State Police, that's my job during the day. My wife and I have been married 16 years here this month, and yeah, I guess that's really about it in a nutshell.
Okay.
I'm Kristen Lumpkin. I was actually born and raised in Fountain City. I graduated from Northeastern in '99. I've been married for 17 years, have three teenage boys. One is sophomore, one a freshman, and one is 7th grader. I currently work at Centerstone Mental Health here in Richmond. I am a family support specialist, and that's about it with me as well.
Okay. And I am going to mention, just for the sake of putting everything on the table, she didn't mention it in her introduction, Angela is also a member of the Whitewater Community Television Board of Directors. So I may be a little bit more quiet through this one than I have through others, just to make sure we're keeping things impartial. Most of, as we have with most of our school board candidates, Melissa will start and have the first couple of questions.
Okay. So let's just start off with telling us a little bit about your background and how it qualifies you to be on the school board, and what your unique perspective brings to the school board. Angela, would you like to start?
Okay. I'm a social worker, and the work that I do with Reed Health is that I actually work in the community, helping to assess health needs throughout the eight counties that we serve. And I use that information, then, to help implement strategies and initiatives to help combat those health needs. So I'm used to, in my day job, looking at issues and getting feedback from the community, and being able to find creative solutions sometimes to issues that are brought up. I find that it's always helpful to have multiple perspectives. So I think the more feedback we can get from the community, and students and teachers, when we can too, you know, would be helpful in a school board position. I got involved in this because I was hoping to add some diversity to the school board. It had been an all-male school board previously, so that's kind of what sparked my interest, and I kind of wanted to add another perspective there. So I think probably the number-one thing that qualifies me is that I am a mom, and I bring a different perspective, and I care about the kids in the school. I have a stake in it, with, you know, having my own kids in the school, and I live in the community, and just, you know, I want to see positive things happen.
Absolutely. Kristen, would you like to go next?
Can you repeat that question?
Yes. Tell us a little bit about your background and how it qualifies you to be on the school board, and then what your unique perspective brings.
Sure. So I'm a lot like Angela, I work in the community in social work as well. But I'm also from our community, born and raised here, so I feel like I have a stake here for 38 years. I've seen the community, and wanting to bring an aspect to a community where they feel involved into our school. My kids go to the school as well, and I too feel like I can bring a different perspective on the school board as well.
Sure. Eric?
Okay, well, I've been a law enforcement officer here in Wayne County for 16 years. One of my areas of specialty in training has been in active shooter training across the state. I've done a lot of active shooter presentations across the state of Indiana, and what we call the unarmed response to active shooter. Also with internet safety, currently a detective with the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, where basically, we work with NICMCC, the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, and we work constantly with trying to find ways to keep kids safe throughout the United States. We have several other agencies and whatnot that we work with on a regular basis. So I bring that to the table also, just as the other two ladies next to me. I've got three children in the school, and just like them, I bring a perspective, and there are certain things that, you know, we all want to see in the best interest for our kids, and I think that's basically one reason why that brings us all here today. So with that experience, and my kids being my stakeholders there, I think it's important to do this, to step up and run for school board, so.
Absolutely. Well, we appreciate that you all three have done that, so. So of course, I'm with the chamber, and so I'm going to head over to the chamber side of things and talk about workforce readiness. Talk a little bit about what you feel like the skills are that are needed in the workforce today, and how you as a school board member can help drive what those skills are for the students moving out of high school and into either higher ed or the workforce.
Eric? Okay. I'll jump in on that. I think it's vitally important, especially nowadays with the technology. We talk about technology, we talk about STEM, everything that involves STEM and the technology, specifically, almost everything we do nowadays. Even back earlier on in my career, when I started, everything was done with a pen and paper. And now we're to the point where we don't do anything with a pen and paper, everything's done on a computer. And it's that way in most of the jobs in the job world that we live in today. So it's important, not only that, but I think also that the kids get the understanding of what it means to talk to somebody, to speak with someone face-to-face and in person, and not just on a phone or a device. So those speaking skills, I think, are very, very important. Making them understand that showing up to work, working hard, passing a drug test, and being there and giving it your 100% goes a long way with employers. And employers are, they're having trouble finding people, and most employers, if you talk to them, they will tell you that. We have a difficult time finding people, and we have a difficult time finding people and keeping people, good people. So those types of things, and explaining to kids, you know, hey, college isn't necessarily the only thing, the only option that you have, there are other options. So the three options, you're military, college, or jumping into the workforce. And trying to prepare our kids, each of them being different, in many different ways, for what works best for them, what works best for that child. And giving them everything that we can give them to prepare them for where they're about to go, wherever that may be.
Right.
So I look at it where I feel like our community needs more life skills for our kids. I work with a lot of kids that have life challenges that we see. So, you know, really preparing them, whether they're going to go to college or not, but be able to be a productive member of our society. We've got a lot of kids that really don't know how to change tires, don't know how to do the life skills to be able to survive. So I really think that needs to be a main focus on, you know, what we can offer for our kids and our community, is being able to learn those skills and be able to survive if they choose not to go on to college.
I do think that, you know, school has changed through the years, and it's important that we change with it, that our school system stays up with the changes in the environment and our community. And workforce development is obviously very important for a vital community. I think that Northeastern has been pretty proactive at this point about partnering up with the chamber, and also the More Than Words campaign, to focus on some of the employability skills. And so they're doing more with those employability skills, and Northeastern's actually gone after doing some of these videos with companies in the community, and then kind of showing them to students, and giving them a different perspective on some of that. I know that one thing that I'm involved with, with the school through Reed, is trying, we're trying to look at doing a middle school career experience. We do a high school career camp at Reed, but we're actually looking at starting some of that a little earlier, getting kids interested in, you know, what careers are available in the medical field, and being able to give them some experience even earlier, so that they can, you know, kind of take a look at, these are some career paths that can be taken, and what does it take to get to that? Do, what's the schooling like? You know, how many years of education do you need? Can you get that through Ivy Tech or IU East? I know that we do already, Northeastern does some partnerships with Ivy Tech for some programming. So I just feel like it's important, I feel like they've dipped their toe in to some of the workforce development stuff, and I hope that as a board member, I would want to support that and nurture that, so that we can continue to work toward a better workforce.
Great.
You're watching the InFocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. We're speaking with candidates running for the Northeastern Wayne School Board, Angela Klein, Eric Fields, Kristen Lumpkin. I'm going to follow up real quick, if I could. You mentioned technology, computers, that's obviously become very big, both in the classroom and for students to be able to take those home. Are you comfortable with where Northeastern is, with their use of technology, the number of computers they have, computers for students, computers in the classroom? And if not, what as a potential board member could you do to help bring that to where you would like to see it? And I think...
Sure. I am very comfortable, we are one-on-one. Each student has an iPad, if they're not restricted on for any reasons, and they also have computers available and laptops available for the kids. They also can take them home with them. There is restrictions as a parent, and through Centerstone, I'm also in the schools at times as well, so I see a different perspective both ways, and I'm very comfortable with that. But I think as a parent too, we still need to monitor what our kids are doing on these technology as well.
Who next?
I completely agree. I feel like, I feel like Northeastern has done a good job of equipping students with technology. I know that there are other school systems where students aren't able to take them home or have limited access to iPads, and we are fortunate that we've been able to work that out. And some of that's done creatively with contracts, lease agreements, that we've worked out with Apple and different companies to be able to do that. I'm, yeah, so I'm pretty comfortable with that. I know our middle school especially has gotten some recent technology certifications. So I know that they're very proud of that, and they deserve that distinction. I feel like, I don't know, as my, I don't have a student in the high school, but I know that for the elementary and the middle school, I feel very comfortable with where they're at.
Yeah, I'm going to agree as well. I think, I think we're doing a good job of doing everything that we can do to continue to get that technology out there. We do have, you know, the iPads. My kids have been bringing those home for quite a while, and then going back to, along with that does come some, you know, some responsibilities and things that the kids have to understand too. And I think that's, that's all part of what it entails, because there's going to be responsibilities with technology, no matter where we go, whether we're adults or whether we're children. And we have to monitor those things, just as Kristen said, the parents also have to monitor what's going on, which falls into the line of, and Kristen and I have even had to work together a few times on some different things over the years, where our careers have brought us together to work on some things that involve technology and the kids and things like that. So I think, as a whole, I think, you know, we're doing the best thing that we can do and get those, those kids used to the technology, giving them everything that we can give them, teach them how to use those things. So I agree, we're doing a good job so far.
One other thing I would follow up on is, I think we'd all agree that it's great to have all that equipment, but if the teachers aren't using, utilizing it appropriately, or, you know, if they're not equipped to be able to appropriate, appropriately teach with those things, then it's kind of a moot point. And I really do think that our teachers are very engaged. I think they, I know that they do trainings and all kinds of things, so that they can learn different software, different apps, different things that they work on, so that they are up-to-date and current. So I feel like we have a really good, our staff is very electronics savvy as well. Northeastern also does, the middle school does a digital literacy night, which is nice, where they invite parents to come, so that they can learn about how, what apps are their kid going to be using, and how do you access those things? They even, you know, for people like myself, who are not super-tech savvy, they even helped me, like, be able to get the app on my phone, so I could check these things and be able to monitor, you know, the student's progress on things. So I think that's, you know, above and beyond. I think that's something that they do that, you know, is just an extra that helps keep parents involved as well.
That's fantastic.
Absolutely.
What would you all say is the biggest issue that the Northeastern School District is facing specifically, or just school districts in general are facing? But I think the viewers probably want to hear about Northeastern specifically, so.
Angela?
Angela?
I would say funding. That covers a lot of things. But I think funding is probably, a lot of other things can be done if we have the proper funding. And it's a struggle, because in Fountain City and our area of Wayne County, Northeastern has the lowest tax base, you know, of all. We don't have a lot of businesses in Fountain City, and so, you know, our funding is already limited that way. Our, our student numbers are good, but our student complexity is low for, in comparison to the other county schools, and Richmond as well, but our size being more like the other county schools, that's kind of my comparison. So that student complexity makes it so, it's like a multiplier for the funding that you receive. And so, we're kind of already at a disadvantage. We have the lowest tax base, and then we also get less per student than some schools, almost all the other county schools. So it's a challenge. We're already at a point where we're kind of behind with the funding. And so I think we've had to find creative ways of doing that, and, and I would continue to push that. I do think that they've done a good job of getting some grant funding and things like that, but like, for instance, we're going to be getting another resource officer, and that's because they were able to go after a grant, a matching grant for security, and so they were able to get that, you know, that's just a creative way of finding a way outside the funding restrictions that we have. They also, Northeastern went together with the other county schools and applied for a Lilly Grant, and that's how we're funding the communities and schools workers. So, you know, I think that's creative, to get together with the other county schools and to go after those types of grants. So those are services that our students are getting, that they wouldn't be getting otherwise, because we couldn't afford to do that with just the base, you know, rates that we get. So I would continue to push for those types of creative funding constraints. Obviously, our school is only so big, so we, you know, can only have so many students. You can always say, oh, we want more students, we want more students, but at some point, we do have some constraints on where we're at. So, you know, I think we have to keep all of those things in consideration. I think there are lots of other issues and things that we need to address, but I think funding is probably the A number one, to me.
Sure.
And with Angela, she's exactly right. Funding's always going to be an issue, I think, no matter where you go. Whether you go in the private sector, and you talk about money and funding, and how you're paying folks, and what you can afford to give them at the time, and just like all three of us, as we probably have household budgets. You've got so much money, you've got so much to spend on groceries, and all these types of things, and you've got to somehow figure out a way to budget that. And I think that's, that's always going to be an issue. There's, there's so many ways that the state is going to divvy up so much money, and Angela's right, you know, the tax base, there aren't a lot of large businesses or corporations that are within the Northeastern Wayne area, so that does probably limit us a little bit. You know, we do get so much per kid, so that's, that's where the funding's going to come from. So I'm just, I'm going to have to agree with most of what she said, as far as that goes. Those are all things that we can work on. But being very proactive and going out after in search of things, that just involves some groundwork on the behalf of board members and the administrators to find those opportunities. You know, just like in my, in my job, finding ways to get the monies needed, to do what you need to do, and get done what needs to get done, and I think that's, that just falls on us, so.
So I agree with them as well. However, I also agree that I think our teachers, we have an amazing staff at Northeastern, but the, the teachers are just amazing. And I think they need more support with the life challenges that these kids are bringing in, with the trauma that they've had. It's, it's, it's life-changing, and some of the teachers are struggling. So for me, I would push more, more support for teachers to stay, and how, how else we can help them and support them, and equip them with what they need to be able to handle the situations with some of these kids. Some of these kids that we're seeing are go through life that I can't even imagine what they go through. And so the teachers have to deal with this, and their behaviors, and so in trying to teach at the same time. The teachers and the staff are amazing, so I would push as in, how can we support them more? How can we help you? Because this is, it's challenging, and it's not going to get better, it's going to get worse, unfortunately. So I feel like as a community, we need to really support our schools and our staff on how we can help. And I think once we offer that help and support, again, funding's always going to be an issue, but just offering our help and time is beneficial more than really anything, so.
So expand on that a little bit. What type of support specifically? Do you have two or three examples of what that may be?
Sure. Well, I can give you a little bit. So I'm trained in trauma, and how trauma affects the brain, so I have done, put on a couple of trainings for trauma for teachers. So when they see the behaviors, you know, they're not, the kids aren't, you know, why are the kids acting like this? And, you know, if the kids throw tantrums, they're kicking them out of the rooms, well, there's an underlying layer. Well, in education, when they go through schooling, teachers don't get that kind of tra, that training. And so, and it's very, it's a very complex trauma, and so you see all kinds of different behaviors. So for me, I think they need more teacher's aid, they need more help, they need more Perez for kids that really need it. But again, it's a funding thing. However, I can't tell you how amazing I am and proud of our staff. I mean, it's just amazing, and they've been there. Some of the high school teachers have been, were my teachers. So I just don't want to lose good teachers, and I really think that they need to be supported more. So again, more teacher's aid, more Perez, more, you know, one-on-one. We're seeing kids with IEPs left and right, five of four plans. That's just because of the life challenges that they're going through, and we need to step up and support our school.
Great. Well, one of my other questions...
Did you want to?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to comment on that as well. I think Kristen is correct on that, and there are only so many things that you can do as an administration and as a school board to support, supporting your teachers and giving them every opportunity. I think we're starting to see classroom numbers climb at Northeastern, sometimes maybe to a point where we're asking our teachers to do an awful lot with up to about 30 kids, and then sometimes, that's a lot, I think, in my opinion, for one teacher to handle 30 kids. And then, like you said, with the IEPs, you've got several of those, sometimes many, many in one classroom, and it is difficult. It's very stressful. I mean, my wife was a teacher for several years at Richmond, so I totally get it on that aspect, being married to a teacher. I know she'd come home some days and was so frustrated, you know, she's like, huh, but you know what? She loved it. And it wasn't about the money, it's never about the money when it comes to teaching, and I think that's what we appreciate, that we see that these people are willing to put that out there, and they're willing to say, you know what, it's not about the money, I'm never going to be rich, but I love what I'm doing, but it's very stressful and frustrating for them. And to be able to support them completely, and like, give, give them as many extra help inside that room as much as possible during the day, if there are that many kids, because, you know, I can, I can imagine having 10 kids over to my house for a sleepover, let alone having, you know, 25 to 30 elementary kids just going crazy at once, and you're one teacher trying to watch everything, and then all of that, then trying to teach in the middle of all that, and it makes it, it's almost impossible sometimes. And I think they do, they do a great job, and we need to 100% support them and give them that support. Ask them what they need, get the feedback, give them what they need to do their job most effectively.
Absolutely. Well, to kind of piggyback on that, it, it leads me to my next question, and that is, you've talked a little bit about retaining teachers and what you need to do to support them currently. How do you, as a board member, see your role in attracting good talent to Northeastern to fill open positions? What, what does Northeastern offer currently, or could Northeastern offer in order to maybe stand out among the crowd?
Eric, start with you.
Okay. I think it's like anything else. The job is the job. You could, you could teach here, you could teach on the other side of the state, north, south, east and west, and you're going to have the same challenges almost everywhere you go. The state mandates you have to do certain things, you have to teach certain things, and, and I think we all get that. But having an atmosphere where the teachers feel appreciated, where they feel wanted, where we can support them as a board, and as our administrators can support them, and give them everything that they can possibly do to make their job easier and more efficient for them, giving them the help that they need and the support, and let them have a voice. Let, let them be able to talk to maybe the middle management, which then leads up to the upper management, you know, as we're talking about our vice principals and our principals, and all the way up through our administrators. But giving them that voice to say, hey, I'm having an issue with this, I could use some help. And then maybe the top going down and saying, hey, what, what do you need to teach 3rd grade? What do you need to teach 6th grade? What would work best for you and your class? Because, you know, if we're, for all three teachers, what's working in her 4th grade class may not be working in her 6th grade class. It's a diverse group of kids, and as we talk about, as, as things change, as technology changes, and all of the, the situations that the kids go through at home that we don't know about, they may show up one day and everything may be great, the next day, you notice, "Hey, something's not right over here, something's wrong." I, I can't put my finger on it, but what can we do to support, you know, that child that day, and figure out what's going on? And that's, that's a lot for, for the teachers to handle. So, giving them that support in any way we can, I think, is, is vital. And I think building that camaraderie will help the teachers in essence, and then if you've got a good work atmosphere, I think that then attracts, you know, getting the pay as high as you can get it, I think, helps. But again, you know, like I said, it's, it's very close, it's comparable around Wayne County. So, you can only do so much with that.
Right. I agree with him 100%, but I would like to also add, and I'm sure they would agree as well, I would like for them, anybody that has concerns, to come and talk to me and be heard. Not that any, not that any of us can like snap our fingers and make it perfect for them, but for them not to be intimidated to talk to us, that, for them to have a voice. I think a lot of people don't want to talk to their boss because they don't feel comfortable, or they, you know, they're like, "Oh, I don't know what to say, I don't want to get in trouble." I want them, I want them to feel comfortable enough to say, "Hey, I'm struggling, what can I do? How can we help you as a board? How can we help them?" Again, I'm very passionate about our teachers because they're amazing.
They are.
But I, and if we don't help them, then my children are going to struggle, his children are going to struggle, and her children are going to struggle, and that's not fair. So, I think we need to equip and better support our, our staff.
Well, there is not much more to add to that. I think they both actually answered that very well. I, I just, I would reiterate what they said. I think that, I do think that, one thing I do want to kind of point out is that I do think that we need to look at making sure with the teacher contracts and things, are there steps for pay increases? What are those? How is that set up?
Absolutely.
I know that some schools don't have like a set schedule of pay increases, and I know that Northeastern does. I believe they get pay raised every year based on years, but they also get raises based on further education, like bumps them to a different level. I think it's important for us to evaluate that and compare that always with other schools and what they're doing, because we certainly don't want to, we certainly don't want to be the ones that aren't providing something.
Absolutely.
And teachers have a better opportunity to go somewhere else. So, I think that it's important that we always be aware of the competition when it comes to teachers, and making sure that not only in addition to, you know, everything they that said, I think that pay is something that we need to always be evaluating.
You're watching the InFocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. We're speaking with candidates running for Northeastern Wayne School District at Large, Kristin Lumpkin, Lumpkin, excuse me.
That's okay.
Eric Field, and Angela Klein. It's, it's been suggested in, in previous forums that the state legislature is doing more harm than good, to a certain extent, for public schools in Indiana, whether that's trying to consolidate smaller school districts into large, making it harder for districts to give teachers pay raises, or maybe even not making the playing field level between public schools, charter schools, and private schools. As a potential school board member, if you could suggest one thing to your state legislature, legislator, that could help Northeastern Wayne School District, what would that be?
Oh. That's a tough question.
That is. That's a good one. That's a good one. So, like, from a funding perspective, you mean?
From whatever perspective, I mean, they touch education.
Oh, I can just ask for anything.
You can just ask them for anything.
Well, then I would ask to let loose of some of these standardized tests. That would be probably the first thing, I would say. If we, if we're shooting for the moon, that would be the first thing, I would say. Because, as we know, you know, as, when we went through school, we didn't have the pressure of these standardized tests, or at least, I don't know, I'm, I think I'm older than you folks. I did not have the pressure of these standardized tests. And so, I think sometimes there were education opportunities available, the teachers had a little more freedom and flexibility to be able to teach, you know, what, what was valuable and what was needed, and maybe those experiences were more valuable than making sure that they can answer this particular question on the standardized test the correct way. So, I think that teachers are in this for the heart of it, and they, they want to educate students, but their hands are tied so many different times, that I think if they weren't having to focus on some of these standardized tests, I think that, I think it would really open up a wealth of opportunities for the teachers. So, I guess if, yeah, if I'm shooting for the moon, I say no standardized test.
Yes.
But beyond that, I guess I would say, I would talk about funding.
So, I'd piggyback to that and agree with her 100%. I wish they would realize that we're a living system and not a factory, and every child learns differently. And just taking the pressure, again, off the teachers, I don't know how many times to say that here, "We have to hit standards, we have to hit standards, we've got to pass, we've got to pass them." I can't imagine that pressure. And so, I think, you know, if they were, if they were in the reality of what the teachers have to go through, I think they would reconsider it, to be honest with you.
I'm going to agree. I'm going to also go back to, and use an example, like, you know, with my own children. I see, you know, the times where they struggle with that test, they get so worked up about trying to pass that test, and it comes down from the top. The teachers are, you know, they're, they're angst about the test as well, they want the kids to do the best they can do, because they're wanting to make a difference, and, but it's, it's difficult when you have a student who can show, you know, an A/B average, and excel in the classroom, and do everything right, and then they sit down and they take a test, and maybe they bombed that test that day. Maybe they had a bad morning, maybe they had a bad night the night before, whatever the case may be, but we're going to base everything on that one test, for that one child, that one day, and I think that's unfair. Not only would that be unfair for adults to do the same thing, it's difficult for us to deal with those things in life, to do that. So, the test, it is an issue. And then also, you know, with, with the funding. My question would be, what, what makes the funding change from school to school? Why is an IEP funding different here than it is here? Why is funding different on the other side of the state as it is here? Why, why does that matter, and why is that funding? And then also, give the schools the ability to work a little bit within themselves and manage, you know, what they have and what they're given, and don't maybe restrict them so much to, "You, you can only do this, this, and this, with this amount of money, and that amount of money, and this amount of money." Give us the ability to, to work that out. We're all intelligent adults, we can figure it out, you know, and, and make good decisions, and do with what works best for us at Northeastern, which may not be what works best for another school. But what we're concerned about is what works best for us at Northeastern. So, give us that, that latitude to do what we need to do. That's, that's what I would say.
So, talk to me a little bit about the schools and the students, and the opportunity for them to connect to the community, specifically to businesses, so that they can develop some relationships. I know you mentioned Reed earlier, looking at a middle school program, but are there other ways that the schools and the students can work together with the business community to better meet the needs of both? Better meet the needs of the businesses that will one day be employers, and better meet the needs of the teachers and the students, the faculty at the school, in order to create a positive learning experience? I'm not sure who's, who's up next. Is it Kristin?
Eric's going to jump.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, because I was kind of trying to grasp exactly, you know, what you're asking, so if you'd kind of...
Well, just talking, are there, are there ways that businesses and community members can partner with the schools?
Okay.
In order to better meet the needs of the schools and the students, and vice versa?
Okay. I look back and I remember, you know, in high school, and I didn't graduate from high school at Northeastern, but when, where I graduated, now we did a career day, and, and they did that every, in high school, they did that every two years, I believe. And basically, what that amounted to was, you know, a child would pick something that they liked, some career, maybe three career fields, and then we would bring someone from the outside, a business owner, a professional, doctors, you know, all sorts of people that would come in, and then they would give the kids a perspective of, "Hey, this is what, you know, a doctor does, this is what a lawyer does, this is what I do when I, you know, am working in construction, I manage my own business." All of these types of things, to give kids the perspective, so that they don't just look at a career field and say, "I want to be a teacher." Well, what exactly does that mean to be a teacher? Because, you know, a lot of people have a misconception about what a job truly is, until they actually get to see it, when they're actually there, and they get to see not only the good side of things, but they get to see the, the difficult side, and how, you know, business owners do struggle, and how, you know, when it comes to certain things, it's a struggle. So, that, internships, I think, are a big thing, you know, where we allow, in high school, I was able to do an internship as well, and got to reach out to the career field that I was interested in, which I thought was, was vitally important. So, that gives not only, you know, the kids the opportunity to see the other side of that, but then also gives the employers, you know, "Hey, we might have someone that's interested in, in this career field." And I'd like to even go back real quick, and not to get off topic, but, you know, in the construction field, for example. I mean, I've got a lot of, a background in construction, I've got a lot of friends who own businesses in construction. It's the one thing that I hear, it's kind of like a dying thing, like, you know, finding people who can lay block, block layers.
Yeah, those trades.
Finding people who are, those trades that, that are, they're being lost.
Yes.
And there's just not near as many kids doing that, and there's all kinds of money involved that, you know, the sky's the limit almost, for a kid that's willing to go out there and say, "You know what? I want to work hard, and I want to make money, and I want to raise, you know, a family, and a respectable income." And the sky's the limit, if you, if you're willing to put in that time and learn that trade. So, there, there's a lot of those types of things, that I think if the kids would realize how important it is to, to get those types of things, so.
And I would agree with him. When I was at, went to Northeastern, we actually had like a shop, and we would actually build a, a house, a mock house in the school. We would have all these other classes that we could do. We had a daycare, not a daycare, it was the preschool there, and we were teamed up with Ivy Tech, and you can earn credit hours when you were in high school, work through there. So, there was that. We still have Career Day now with the kids. They come in from the middle school and high school, but other than that, I'm not really familiar with all the other connections that we have, so.
Sure. Yeah, I, I do think that, I think, I feel like our school is like ahead of the curve with some of that career readiness, workforce development, making some connections there in the community already. But I do think that there probably, there obviously would be room for further development of those things. I was excited about some of the things that they were doing with Career Day, and some of those types of things. I think it would be interesting to see if, with these new pathways that they, they've introduced at the state level, that are graduation requirement type things now, it'll be interesting because I think, you know, like I said, it's great that we've kind of already started initiating some of these things, but I think these pathways are going to kind of force those things into fruition a little bit quicker. So, I think it would, I think the pathways, I have faith that the pathways are going to be a fairly easy transition for our school system. I would venture to guess that there are some school systems that are going to struggle with that, but I think the key to that is going to be being able to build relationships in the community with businesses and different places like Urlum, Ivy Tech, IU East, you know, some of these education organizations that, that kids could maybe do some dual credit things, and move into some different things like that, but also with the companies to be able to give them internships, and job shadow days, and some of those kinds of things. So, I think we're in a pretty good position.
And I would, I would agree with that. I mean, I, I kind of set you up to, but that's true. Just a little, just a little. I set you up, totally. No, but I will say, just to give a shout out to Northeastern, they are great to work with. From a chamber perspective, from businesses in the community, we hear that often. Don Sancini is a rock star, so you're very fortunate to have her, and, and we've worked with Tara Nocton at the high school level, a lot with senior job fairs, and JA in a day, and those kinds of things. But, of course, you know, we continually at the chamber get questions on, you know, what are we doing to make sure that these students are already connected with our community by the time they graduate? And so, if there are opportunities, just to put that out there to, to you all, whether you are elected on the seat or not, if there are opportunities that you see that we should be talking about, please give us a call.
I do think, just, I'm just gonna, I guess I'm tooting all of our horns here, but I do think that it says something, that we've got three candidates here that all work out in the community, you know, taking an interest in this. So, I think that it's beneficial for, no matter which one of us gets the seat, I think that you're, you're going to get a board member that is willing to talk with businesses, or do what we need to do to try to help make those connections for our school system, and those businesses, or chamber, or, you know, whatever the case may be. So, I think, I think we're kind of uniquely suited to be able to do some of that, because we do a lot of work in the community.
Sure.
You're watching the InFocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11, being made possible by the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce and Whitewater Community Television. Speaking with candidates running for an at-large seat on the Northeastern Wayne School Board, Eric Field, Kristin Lumpkin, Angela Klein. I'm being joined by Melissa Vance, President and CEO of the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce, who continues the question.
All right. Let's switch over to safety, which I know, Eric, this is right up your alley, but with safety being an issue that is a concern around the country, I think when we look at small school districts that have been a target in other areas, we can't think that because we're a small school district, that it doesn't matter. So, talk a little bit about the safety at Northeastern, and do you feel like it's enough? Are there improvements that need to be made? And how can you assure your parents and students that they, that they're safe?
Kristin, I think you said this one.
I feel really confident with what we have. Officer Powell is our resource officer currently, right now, and he's amazing, so he makes you feel very safe and warm. But again, we have a great administration that, you know, will keep us safe, we have the doors locked. Do I think there's, can be improvement? Sure. Do I think it's sad? Yes. This is the same school I went to, we didn't have this, and so, that's very saddened to me, but reality is, that's where we are right now in the world. Do I think we can make improvements? Sure. Do I know what those improvements look like? I do not at this time.
Sure.
Angela?
Yeah, I think at this point with society like it is, if you're not looking at these plans and making adjustments, then you're doing a disservice to your students. We can't pretend like this could not happen to us, because it could. We, we have a unique situation with Northeastern right now, because we had, after the unfortunate events in Noblesville, of that shooting there, we had some parents and grandparents that saw a need, they felt like they wanted to do something, they started a GoFundMe page to get metal detectors for Northeastern. And I applaud their efforts, I think that's awesome, when, when groups can identify a need, and like jump in there to try to do something about it, you know? So, I was excited that they did that. So, they started this GoFundMe, and then kind of, I think it got going, and then they were like, "Wow, what are we going to do?" So, they did reach out to the school, and, and we were able to kind of talk with them about what they, what their vision for this was. It was right about the time that the governor released the handheld wands, and so, Northeastern was actually going to be the recipient of, I think, five wands. So, then, the group that was raising the funds was like, "Is that what you need, or do you need something else?" So, we actually started a security, safety and security task force, made up of some of these folks that have started this GoFundMe, that had interest. There's some teachers on it, some administrators, a couple board members are on it, and it's open to the public and anybody who wants to be there. But it's kind of just the initial, they have these funds now, and so, they were kind, trying to decide what to do with that. So, rather than looking at full, large metal detectors, because there's logistics to all that too.
Right.
Which I'm sure you could speak to more clearly than I could, but obviously, with the logistics of all that, maybe that isn't the best route for us, you know, for our school. Maybe we could use the funds better for trainings, that the whole staff could be trained on, or, you know? So, they've actually initiated with some of those funds, some trainings that, that are offered, that we'll be able to send some administrators and some teachers to. teachers to. So I, I'm excited about that because I feel like that's a way to be able to get the community involved as well. We're going to hear their voice, and it's their funding. So they get to make, you know, ultimately these decisions about, you know, what they're interested, you know, what they feel like they're interested in funding. So I think it's great. I think it's a win-win. I was a donor for their, I donated to the GoFundMe because I was really impressed with it. I, I do think too, some kudos to the school system because they did go after that matching grant for the resource officer. So we will have Officer Powell, obviously, at the high school, middle school, but we are going to be getting a full-time resource officer at the elementary now, which we did not have before. So that's exciting.
That is exciting.
So I feel like we're, you know, we're moving in a good direction. But I think there's always things to evaluate, and I'm sure you want to speak to that.
Sure. Absolutely. And it's, it's something that I've, I've tried to, to really get involved at Northeastern to get that training, because, you know, the training that, that I can offer them from my profession, it's free. It costs them absolutely nothing, but my time, and it's free. And, and the training that, that we're offering is, is the same thing that they're offering across the United States. It's, it's all over the place, it's out there, you see it. What are schools doing to combat these types of dangers, that approach and come about, you know, whether you're at the shopping mall, whether you're at Walmart on a Saturday morning, or whether you're in school, whether your children are in school, and what can you do? And what we have to do as a community is, we have to train not only the teachers, but the kids to pick up on things that they see and say, hey, I see this going on. I need to make one of my teachers or somebody aware of what's going on, and then, and give them the ability to deal with that situation, and, and give them options in what they can do, and, and show the, the teachers and how to respond to those types of things. What to look for, how to respond, and then, and then the people, the community, so they understand what's going on. If they hear something like, the school's on lockdown, what does that mean? So let's be transparent, so, so the parents aren't going, okay, go on a lockdown. Well, that doesn't necessarily always mean that, that something bad is happening at the school. That could just mean that something's going on outside or whatever, and we're, we're just taking those precautions. So
Right.
Training the, the teachers, training the students, so that the students know where to go and what to do, so they're fully aware of it, and then getting everybody on the same page and being transparent, so, so we can all move forward. And again, there's no cure-all, there's no one thing that's going to work, and I think you've, you've probably heard it before, if someone comes and they're trying to sell you something that's the only way and the only thing that's going to work, then I don't think you should put much weight in that basket because there isn't just one thing that works. But we do know statistically that there are several things that work and have worked over the years. And we know that time is vitally important. Five to eight minutes is going to be our, our timeframe in an active shooter situation before that, from the start to finish. So within five minutes, it's over, you know, five to eight minutes. So when you start talking about all those things, well, five minutes is a long time when you're in the middle of something.
Right.
But five minutes is not a long time when you've got people responding to that specific location for an emergency. That, that's kind of like an eternity to get the folks
Right.
That you need there. So then having, you know, the SROs, the school resource officers there, which I was actually trained and certified as a school resource officer last year, let my certification lapse this year, but I've been through that training, so I totally understand that as well. And I just think it's important that we have that, they understand that, and everybody's got to work together. And like I said, it's, it is a problem. It is something, we don't want to close our eyes and say, you know what, it's never going to happen here. Unfortunately, it has. And, and like Angela mentioned, it did happen in Noblesville, and the, the principal that we now have, he totally gets it. And it's wonderful because he understands firsthand just how tragic and how quick things can happen, and, and we just need to all be aware of that and be prepared for it no matter what.
Right.
So...
Well, I think one last question that we'll have time for today, depending on how long you want to elaborate.
We're probably under eight minutes.
There we go.
Keep the elaboration close.
Obviously, schools are nonprofit organizations, they're, they're government or tax-based funded, but they operate as a business. They still have budgets, they still have bottom lines. We can say we want to provide certain elements, we want to have certain opportunities for our schools, certain facilities, but there's a limit. And so talk a little bit, each of you, about your background in looking at budgets and managing budgets, and how you would go about the, the difficult tasks that you would be faced with as a school board.
Angela, start with you.
I am a director of my department at Reed Health, so I have my budget for my department that I am challenged with, working on every year, and working within the constraints of that. We, my department is also challenged with providing all the community benefit for the eight counties that Reed serves. And so that entails making sure that we are meeting our non-for-profit commitment to our communities. Last year, we were able to claim to the IRS $48 million worth of community benefit. So I am not unfamiliar with the dollars and cents of those things. We are, and I'm working at a non-for-profit myself, and, you know, always working in those funding constraints as well, but also trying to stretch the dollar to make sure that we're trying to meet the needs out in the communities that we serve all the time. So I think, I also have a few months, I'm the incumbent, but the incumbent since April. So I don't have a lot of experience, but I have been able to pick up quite a lot. We just went through our budget for next year for Northeastern, and so I do feel like I've gotten a grasp of that. I have asked a million questions because funding for schools is very different. So they're probably tired of hearing all my questions, but I, I feel like I've got a pretty good grasp of that now.
Great.
Sure. I mean, I have a business administration and management degree, so what I, what the school for was business, so, you know, I, I understand that aspect of things. And then, you know, managing a business, whether large or small, whether it be as small as a household or as large as a huge corporation, you've basically got the same types of things you've got to deal with. You've got to prioritize, we've only got X Y Z amount of money. So where, where do we spend first? What's most important? What can we not live without? And then down at the bottom, if we have something left over, you know, if we give it to this, you know, part of the agency or the, the school this year, maybe next year, we're going to choose another and then choose another for that extra money at the top after we've prioritized everything. But again, I think prioritizing everything, and in a lot of cases, I think it's, it's common sense, and prioritizing what, what do we have to do? What do we have to meet? And then go from there and see, see where we can be. So I don't know that it necessarily has to be super complicated. Sometimes it does get super complicated, but not, I think sometimes we can complicate things more, you know, as a whole than we really need to.
Right. You just took the words right out of my mouth. Really. I was just going to talk about prioritizing, you know, what's, what's, what's more important and what's beneficial. And I'm a very factual person. Show me the numbers, why the money is going here, why the money is going there. We can hear all kinds of stories about budget, we don't have any money, where's our money going? But until we know the facts, we're not sure. And I'm not on the board, so, you know, we don't know. So in the community, you just hear, where's the money going? Where's this going? Where's that going? We don't know. So I think just prioritizing and what's most important for our community and our school at the time is what we need to, to work on.
Great.
Thank you all very much for being here. We've been speaking with candidates for an at-large seat on the Northeastern Wayne School District, Kristen Lumpkin, Eric Fields, Angela Klein. Thank you for taking the time, putting your name on the ballot, and going through the election process. A lot of people are willing to talk and complain, not everybody's willing to do what you all have done.
And end of that.
Thank you, Melissa Vance, for being here with us. I think you're not here tomorrow, but you're back in a week or so.
That's right.
Okay.
I won't be gone long.
No, we're going through this another few weeks. Couple of things to remind you of as we head out on this week's In Focus. Again, by the time we get to next Thursday night's show, if you have not registered to vote, it will be too late. So we want to remind you, Tuesday, October 9th, the last day you can register to vote in this November election. Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30 at the voter registration office, 301 East Main Street, or you can go online to indianavoters.com. We will be back tomorrow night with an edition of the In Focus Candidate Forum. We'll be speaking with candidates for the sixth congressional district, and then we turn to next Thursday night, the 11th. Melissa won't be here because it's the taste of Wayne County and the Business Expo going on. Big event for the Wayne County
That's right.
Area Chamber of Commerce. But we'll be speaking with candidates for Indiana State Representative District 56 on October 8th, County Council District 3, and on October 25th, Indiana State Senate District 27. We'll ask them about standardized testing. I want to remind you of a couple of other forums that you can participate in or go and watch. November 9th, at the Golay Community Center, you see some of the races there where they're being invited. These are being put on by Hometown Media Group. And then on October 16th, you can also find another one, school board members again, being focused on that one, and that will be at Hartley Hills Country Club. Absentee voting or early voting actually starts on October 10th. You can do that Mondays, 8:30 to 5:00, Tuesday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30 at the voter registration office, 301 East Main Street. Also, if you look down that slide, you'll see a couple of Saturdays where you can do that. And then, of course, Melissa and I will be here the evening of November 6th. Election night will start at 6:00 PM here at the WCTV studio and go until we have all the results for all of the voting that will take place. Thank you very much for watching this edition of the In Focus Candidate Forum, being made possible by the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce and Whitewater Community Television. Replays of this show can be seen tonight beginning at 10:30. It will also be available on our video on demand site, WGTV Online. Have a good night.